We'll call the meeting to order. Well, we won't. Good evening. This is Tuesday, June 28th, meeting of the Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note that this meeting is being recorded and some of the attendees are participating by video conference. We'll take a roll call to see if we have a quorum. Jay?
Hi.
Carolyn?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
We have a quorum. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:34.
7:34.
Yep. This open meeting of the Berlin Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency. And access is available through my town government, Berlin site. And the Zoom platform is what we're using. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes? How many minutes? We got just the last one?
Just the last one, yeah.
So moved.
Second?
I think you have to second it. Oh, no, wait a minute. Yeah, that leaves us a little.
Jay?
I second it. I second it, and I also vote up.
Hi, Carolyn?
Um, hi.
Tim, I. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Motion.
All right. What do we got? We got something that's 7:40, 2:56. Okay, 7:40 is 2:56 Central, 8 o'clock is the Solomon Pond Mall parking hearing, 8:30 is Emily and CMRPC and the project update on housing. 9 is 139 Coolidge, the golf station. And 9:30 is Broom Royal School sign. Tom is out to sea.
Yep, apparently.
Um, I do have Janet's resignation letter. I've, I emailed that. I attached it to an email to Eloise. If Eloise got it, she, if she just raises her hand. And if she didn't get it, she won't raise her hand.
She raised her hand.
Good. So she got it. She was gonna, at some point, she'll forward it to the select board. The select board. Um, I, I think Eloise feels that the habit is to announce the fact that there is an opening. Just in case there's wide interest. But we should be able to get an appointment, I would hope, by the time we meet again on the 12th. What'd you find in the mailbox? Any bills?
No. What did I find? I found a bunch of surveys which I sent to, uh, sent over to
Emily?
Emily. Um, I found a letter from billing commissioner about oh, about the Coolidge Road thing, which we're gonna talk about today, which I forwarded to you guys, right?
Yep, we got that.
Yeah, no, that was actually very helpful.
Yeah.
And I got this. I don't know what to do with this. This is the official, you can, I can feel this. This is our votes from the town meeting. Does this get filed somewhere?
Yeah, we file it in our file drawer in the, in our
I don't know about the file drawer. Like, I didn't know about the mailbox until I stumbled across it, but now. Right. Well, I gotta bring it back down and maybe Eloise will help me figure out where to put it. And then this other thing I found is a little puzzling, because this is dated May 19th, and this is someone's A and R request. But there's no signature of the applicant or contact info.
Is there an address?
On top. It's, um, Highland Ridge. Uh, it just says parcel C in the red, that refers to, which are up on top of the mailbox, which I didn't get.
So I actually do know what that's about.
Okay.
Um.
Cornerstone Engineering, Inc., in Northwell.
Right, so the land around, around the development at Highland Ridge that's gonna have the CR on it. Um. They submitted the conservation restriction to the state last September. The reviewer quit uh, the end of September. Or they actually, sometime in October. Uh, so everything sat and their occupancy permits were contingent on the conservation restriction being finalized. So then they decided they were going to, that if they donated the land that was to be conserved to Sudbury Valley trustees. They could, um, that that, according to the bylaws that we have, that that is sufficient protection so that we don't have to wait for the CR. In between talking with, in between negotiating all of this, this conservation restriction has actually now been reviewed. Um, but I believe they, um, I, I mean, I know that the donation to Sudbury Valley trustees is gonna still happen because they will monitor the CR um, in perpetuity. And we were trying to set up something with the homeowners association and that was just fraught with potential issues down the road. So where conservation's happier with it this way? Um, but they need the land divided. Uh. So you're saying, though, that it was an incomplete application?
Well, it's marked here with a yellow sticky and an arrow because the applicant's signature name and address is not there. And then we should be, I don't know if we're doing it or not, we should be requiring electronic copies of drawings.
We do.
Oh, we do. Okay, so I'd never got that, that I'm aware of.
Do we also require paper copies, though?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Right, so the paper copies are down there, but I don't think I have the electronic one to send everybody.
Okay.
And they're not even, we're kinda out of time for
We'll, we'll come back to that later. 7:40, we're gonna talk about Central Street.
Yeah, is Annie?
Is Annie in the audience?
Annie, I don't see an Annie.
Um, if anyone is here to talk about the Central Street property. 13, what is it?
Yeah, with, this is, this is Mo's, right?
Yeah, please raise your hand. Oh, Anthony, isn't that it? Just came on.
Um.
Anthony, are you here to talk about, uh, 256 Central? Yes, okay, let's elevate Anthony. Hi there.
Hello. Good.
Um, why don't you give us your names again, so Jay can record them appropriately?
Anthony Triforos.
And I'm Annie Rose Triforos.
Thank you. And, and you wanted to have an informal discussion about, um, the property that you purchased there at, at Central Street, so take it away. It's your show.
Okay, well, um, like I was talking to Jay, so we really didn't have any new drawings for you guys, so I kinda like, we wanna join this meeting because we wanna get a feedback from all of you. Um, I know we presented last time what we wanted to see in that property, but you know, we were surprised about the conservation and we found out about it, so right now, we've kinda like, we wanna see first what's your input for it. Like, what you're gonna wanna see in it.
Right.
Um. Well, you, that's not necessarily the way the board usually works. Um, it's, it's zoned residential agricultural. So if you look at the use charts, um, the listing of what's allowed in that zone outlines the, the options that are available to you. Sometimes people will come to the planning board and say they want to um, utilize a property for use that's not allowed. And in that case, they might, um, wanna take and make the effort to have the property rezoned. Sometimes they come to the planning board and ask if the board is interested in rezoning a parcel. Um, and if the, if the board, um, has thought about it and it's included in the master plan and things like that, it's something that we might consider. In this case, speaking from my time on the board over the last number of decades, we've, we've never really thought too seriously about rezoning that parcel. Um, or parcels along that corridor coming into town to, to other uses. We've left it as an agricultural residential zone. Um, the the veterinary clinic was built as a garden center, which was a use that was allowed in the residential agricultural zone. And it sat empty for quite a while because another similar allowed use wasn't coming forward. Eventually, the, the veterinary clinic came, and that's an allowed use for the residential agricultural zone, so it, it fit in nicely. But because that corridor is residentially agriculturally zoned, in fact, even the, the gas station across the street is zoned residential agricultural now. Oddly enough.
Yeah, so the gas station is, uh, you said it's residential, so oh, I, I thought it would be commercial if you're gonna put a gas station in.
Yeah, it, it was commercial at one time, and the gas station was put in, and then at a town meeting, when the planning board was proposing some modifications to the zone, the commercial zone that's closer to Gates Pond Road and, and goes to the Hudson Line.
Yeah.
Some of the citizens at the town meeting proposed that that parcel be switched back to residential agricultural, and it passed.
Hmm.
So even that parcel is, is currently zoned residential agricultural.
Yep.
And then there is, there's the added layer, um, of the conservation restriction.
Right.
For you guys.
We actually looked at it, so it's not the whole property that has the conservation.
Correct.
Um, I spoke to Randy, and I think it's morally part on the left side. So, um, he said, you know, like, it's not really all of it. So, right, like, really straight, straightforward, like, when we bought this property, we have no idea with it. So we have big plans for it. That's why, like, the condominiums, like, the one that we used, that originally represented to you guys, that was actually the second, like, the second, um, plan for us to do, like, that was the second, um, option. We really wanted to, like, because we are, like, our family, it's with, um, with Dairy Queen, so we've been with that, with that business for a while, so we also had that. Um, when we approached our agent, it's like, you know, if there's a possibility that we can put a Dairy Queen in this, because it's such a good location. But then, um, we went the other way, because like, you know, uh, after we found out, it's like, okay, agricultural residential, but um, after, you know, like, we spoke last time, and then I kinda like, we just wanna know what else you guys wanna see in it. Um, I feel like if I'm gonna put a new, I mean, we're gonna put two new houses in there, I'm thinking like, it's because it's across, what you call it, the gas station, it's a very busy road, so I don't know how is that gonna, how's that gonna work with that, but we're, we're pretty much open, if you guys have any suggestions, and then we can go from there. Because, I mean, I want, we wanna do something with a property. I think it's such, really such a good location.
The other members of the board have anything to comment on right now?
Hmm. Well, what's available now, other than a veterinary clinic, is a farm stand, probably, even because it's been there before, right? And, uh, cider mill, sawmill, ice house, riding stable, those are disasters. Go get one of those. Uh, dog kennel. Golf course, private club.
Yeah, the, as Jay is pointing out, residential agriculturally zoned, um, properties are primarily used for the residential purposes that, you know, you, that, that parcel was being used for that for quite a while. Um.
There is a residential care facility, right?
Yeah, for under six.
For under six patients.
Yeah. Um.
Kind of multifamily.
You know, have you had a chance to, to review the, the exact line of, of where the conservation restriction cuts through the property, Annie?
Yes, yes, we actually, um, after the last meeting, I spoke to Randy, and originally, I told him, like, you know, maybe we'll just keep the farm, you know, keep it going, we're just gonna, you know, make it like, um, yourself flowers and stuff like that, and then I'm just gonna build a new, two new, what you call it, houses where the, or house is right now, and then there's another house on the right side. So I'm gonna build another one in there. That was my original plan, but then husband and my other, um, his brother's like, oh, you know, they're not too in it with me, so it's like, well, I'm, I'm gonna try to talk to the planning board again, see, you know, what, what they think about it and stuff like that, so I, they didn't really like, like, move forward with, um, with what I wanted to do, because like, I, I wanna do something with a property right now, and I don't wanna wait, you know, like, long, too long to do something with it, so.
Right. So, um, two residential units can't sit on the same lot, so the, the parcel would have to be subdivided to create two, two buildable lots. If, if you were talking about removing all the structures and starting from scratch, you'd have to have two 80,000 square foot parcels with 200 feet of frontage for each. So you, you, you've got a good deal of frontage.
Right.
You know, your, your acreage is just around five and a little bit, or something like that?
Yeah.
So, um, it, it's possible that you could configure two buildable lots that would be outside of that conservation restricted land.
Right.
Um, in terms of where the, the parcels were built, I mean, or, you know, the, the units. Um, there is only one house there now. The others are barn, right? So, yeah.
Yeah.
One single family house.
Right, yeah.
But, you know, that, so that's the, the type of engineering that you'd have to do. You, you, if you plan to demolish the house, you'd have to go to the historic commission and, um, they have to, they have the option to delay a demolition. Um, if the structure is considered historic, in which case, there's a, there's a a period of delay while there's an opportunity for, I mean, someone might come and say they wanna rescue part of the structure, or, you know,
Yeah.
move it onto another site, you know, so um, that, that's something else that you need to consider.
Okay. Okay.
Conservation restriction, if you look on the state database, seems to be just beyond the greenhouse, like, it just touches greenhouse, but I don't think that those maps are that reliable. So I think
The one, yeah, the one that Randy sent to me as well, it's just like where, um, I believe, like, half of the greenhouse, so that's why I wanna, I said, like, we'll just keep the greenhouse so that we don't, you know, we don't mess up with the conservation. Then I'll just build whatever, like, on the right side, well, left side, if you're facing the property, so.
Yeah. So, um, you know, it, you, you are allowed as a citizen to, to petition for a zoning change. It has to go to town meeting.
Right.
A zoning change needs a, a two-thirds vote of approval, which, um, is not always easy to get, but, um, people certainly do it. And, and so that, that would be an option that you'd have if you, if you thought you had a strong case for changing the zoning. Um, the difficulty i- is that you're, if you were just looking at a single parcel that you wanted to rezone, um, that sometimes gets problematic. It's, it's usually better to, to look at a uh, the broader picture, I guess I'd say. Um, but where the town meeting, a number of years ago now, did change the zoning on the gas station from commercial to residential, uh, if that feeling still is the, the current view of town folks, then it, it probably would be difficult to get a zoning change on this site. Um, particularly when you know, the, the area is utilized right now by those uses that are allowed in the residential agricultural zone. Um, you know, the farm stand at the corner of Sawyer, or the two farm stands at the corner of Sawyer Hill and 62, and um, the veterinarian clinic and stuff like that, so. But, you, you know, that's the type of stuff you need to think about, and then, you, you know, you can talk to the building inspector, um, and then, you know, work more with your engineer to try to see what you can configure based on where that lot line is for the conservation restriction.
Yep. Um, question, um, I, I didn't see it in the paperwork. Is, um, daycare, is that, um, under residential? Agricultural, like, putting up a daycare that's commercial, totally commercial? I mean, I'm not gonna be touching the farm. I, I really wanna, I'm gonna keep the greenhouse where the conservation is. But I'm just really looking forward to, like, develop where the house is, and but, like what you said, I'm gonna ask about the historical and, but that big part in there where the barn is, I wanna develop something in there.
So my, my recollection, I, I don't have this, maybe, you got the bylaw right there in front of you, Jay?
I don't see any, I don't see daycares in here.
I think you can have a, as a home occupation.
Hmm.
Um, daycare may be one of the, but I, I'm trying to recall.
Hmm.
That would be something to ask the building inspector.
Okay.
So good.
Yep, well, thank you so much. I really appreciate your time.
Well, thank you, Annie.
Yep, and I'm looking forward to meet with, um, you again, and hopefully, then we will have more, um, idea to present for the property. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Um, Sue Roberts has her hand up.
Okay, let's, before you go, Annie, let's see what Sue has to say.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Hi, um, I have the zoning bylaws here, and what it says is that the total number of children under 16 in a family daycare home cannot exceed six.
Yeah.
So a daycare would be limited to six children.
And it would be a home daycare, not a
Yeah.
Not a business, per se.
No, it, it does specify, a family daycare home does not mean a private residence used for an informal cooperative arrangement among neighbors or relatives. So it is a licensed daycare.
But it's limited to six kids.
Limited to six.
Yeah, that's not gonna work. Yeah. The return.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, take care. Um, we'll start the hearing for, uh, Solomon Pond Mall in three minutes. I'm gonna go get my zone and bylaw while we're waiting. I'll be right back.
All right.
I promise.
We need some music. Jay, I know you told me how to.
I think we're done.
Oh, we can Yeah. Trying to remember how to put her back in the audience. It was like, right, hover over participants and right-click, but that's not working.
You have three little dots above, to the upper right of the picture.
Yep.
And it's not in there, huh?
So now, because if I remove, then that is, that like, boots are totally out, I believe.
You think?
Um.
I'll look it up again. Should be emote, right?
Yes. Oh, wait, wait, wait. Change role to attendee. Think I found it.
There's a panel. Hover over the name of the panelist you want.
Yeah, I got it. It was clicking in the wrong place. Yeah, she, so right, she's back in the audience now. All right. We have a full house tonight.
How many ice houses we have these days? And sawmills. Maybe time for
The point is, is we could.
Eight o'clock.
Look at you.
Evening. This is Tuesday, June 28th, uh, meeting of the Berlin Planning Board. We're gonna call a public hearing to order. And this is in regard to a proposal at the Regional Shopping Center to install a contractor's yard. The proponent, the, the proponent is Bond Civil and Utility Construction, and Jason is
Is here.
Here, let's elevate.
Promoting him, yep.
Jason, is, is there anybody else you want us to promote?
Bun, gotta get, gotta get it to work for him first. Frustrating. I'm clicking. Just not responding.
Push harder.
Yeah. Let's try that. All right, well, first, I'm gonna allow him to talk, because, and then I will continue to work on promoting him.
Jason, can you hear us?
Oh, hey, guys, yeah, how are you?
Great. Hey, Jason, is there anybody else that you'd like us to elevate, so they can participate in the discussion as we start?
Uh, we'll have, uh, well, eventually, it was, um, Shelley Clark and
Shelley Clark's here?
Yep.
Now, see, she went right away. That's so frustrating.
Hi, Shelley.
Oh, Jason.
There we go. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yeah, I think you're now a panelist as well, so there, there you go.
There we go.
We also had, um, Paul McKinley was looking to join us also from Weston and Sampson, but, um, I know the timing for us was, was supposed to be 8:30?
We posted it a date, so
Okay. He's the only one. He's the only one. Let me see if I can text him to hop on now. He's not in the crowd.
Good. So when you're ready, Jason, I'll let you go ahead and and uh, cover what it is you're proposing and then we'll have the board an opportunity to ask some questions and then if there are other boards in the audience, we'll ask them if they have any interest in asking questions and then we'll open it to the public.
Sure.
And Jay, are you able to write down people's names? So we've got a list of who's here at the hearing?
Uh, if I saw them.
If you if you push on panelist.
Right. So down at the bottom, Jay, see where it says participants?
Um. Oh, there it is. Okay, yeah.
Yep, click on that and then it should be five panelists and twelve attendees.
Oh, alright. Grab that. Yep, no problem.
Good. Alright. So whenever you're ready, Jason, go ahead.
So, um, we'll get going. I did text, uh, so Paul McGinty, who's our third-party uh, LSP from Weston and Sampson, uh, just to speak to any kind of environmental issues that might arise, but uh, Jason Langfordock with Bond Brothers, uh, Civil Utility Division. Um, I think we spoke about a month or so ago, but we're looking to um, set up contractors yard uh, within Solomon Pond Mall in Berlin. Yard, uh, would consist of two separate sites, uh, both totaling about two acres within the property. Uh, Shelley's here joining us, um, as the Solomon Pond Mall representative. So the contractors yard, uh, is planned to be, uh, set up for roughly eighteen to twenty-four months, uh, starting this summer. You see Paul joining too, thank you. Primarily would be used for staging of materials for a construction project we have coming up. Um, materials consisting of, excuse me, HDP piping, uh, which are conduits for lack of a better term. Uh, and soil staging for um, excavated materials uh, and just a staging material until, and staging yard until they get, um, transported off to another site. We did provide, uh, to the planning board, uh, series of infra, or series of materials, including a site plan that dictates a truck, a trucking route. Uh, rough size of the, of each site, um, some signage we'd have posted. Uh, both locations would be, uh, enclosed in temporary fencing with a locked gate. Uh, we'd have some UNS controls around the perimeter of each site. Uh, Carolyn, I know we've spoken in the past that, uh, you'd like to visit the site prior to, uh, and after the setup, uh, which is something obviously that's welcome to do so. Um, and we coordinate with that if the, if we are granted to do, uh, to set up a contractors yard there. Um, various signage throughout the, uh, throughout the site for contractors entrances, uh, truck travel, um, whatnot. Again, we're hoping, um, to start this probably in the next couple of months, so. That's really what I have as far as the general statement. Uh, Paul McGinnly's here, or I'm sorry, um, McKinley is here from Weston and Sampson as our our client's third-party LSP, so he's not affiliated with my company at all, but he's, uh, he's in charge of um, making sure that we're doing what we're to be, to to do as far as environmentally. Constraints go, or, uh, responsible, being a responsible contractor, doing what we need to do with our erosion sediment controls. Uh, making sure that they're installed properly and maintained properly. Um, there would be a series of, uh, concrete bins roughly thirty foot by thirty foot. Um, and dimensions which would be covered. Um, those bins would contain some of the soils that, uh, we're planted upstaged on site. And the site would be right, um, excuse me, regularly inspected, uh, by somebody outside of the bond, uh, group, so. At this point, I guess we'll open it up to any questions the board has.
Board members, any questions right off the top of your head here?
Uh, not me.
Alright, the only question I have is actually not for Jason, Tim, it's for you. Um, at the end of the last time we spoke with Jason, you were going to, you guys gonna get in touch with, see if you could talk to town council to find out if we even have authority to make this decision.
So, as we recall, initially the proposal was, um, taken up by the building inspector and determined that site plan approval could be um, reviewed by the Board of Appeals. Um, and and the Board of Appeals thought about that for a little while, realizing that there's an underlying zone that is, that preexisted the overlay that was limited industrial. And then the overlay that was passed in ninety-four for the Solomon Pond Mall became active at that time and has a series of options that are available for what can be done with the property. So the ZBA asked town council whether they had authority and town council said, no, it really shouldn't belong in the hands of the planning board. So um, the ZBA bowed out and, um, that's why Jason has come to us. Um, town council if if it's, it's a, an unique situation. We've got an overlay that doesn't allow this use. Um, town council felt that there there could be a way in which the the planning board could issue a temporary permit for a use that wasn't allowed in the zone. Now, I, we we chatted about that and um, I don't think she she felt particularly strongly about that, but she said that in her mind was one option that the planning board could utilize. So you could issue a temporary permit. And we didn't get into the nuances too much about, you know, how it is that we'd end up in a situation like that. I said, you know, where would that end? I mean, if if other parts of town wanted to have a use that wasn't allowed in the zone temporarily permitted. Um, you know, what kind of slippery slope is that? But um, so that's essentially, she said that's, that is an option. I, you know, we need to decide whether we feel comfortable with that. So that's the, the avenue that she suggested we could pursue. If we felt comfortable with that. Does that answer your question?
Um, well, a little bit. I mean, cuz personally, I actually don't have a problem with this project. I just don't know that we have the authority to say that, to allow it. Um, so that that's how I feel about it.
Any other questions that you've got? Jay, you got any questions?
Well, I I'm look, looking forward to hearing comments from the Butters and
Right.
Other people in town that are interested one way or the other.
So I guess if we're all set right now, if there are other boards here that would care to participate, like we've got ZBA members, we got Jim and Suzanne. Um, if either of them have any questions that they'd like to ask at this time, that'd be fine with us. And if not.
Susanna.
Susanna, yeah.
Hello. I just wanted to relay a question that came up when they were before the zoning board. And it's for yet another board, which is the assessors. It is this area going to get a different tax assessment while they are utilizing it? I don't have an answer to that, but it was a question that came up on our board.
Okay. It's a question with no answer. Anybody else from any other boards that would like to ask questions? Alright, then let's turn it to the general audience. Are there Butters or other folks in town that would like to ask questions or make some comments? I know we have a letter from Karen Brown.
Yeah, and I believe she just put her hand out.
Yep, so let's, why don't we elevate Karen because she's got a letter here with a number of comments that I think she probably wants to share.
Karen, you are on. Just need to unmute.
Okay, thank you.
There you go.
Hi, Karen.
Hi, Tim, how are you?
Good. Go ahead. If you've got some questions or comments, we're happy to hear.
Well, I I sent, you know, in your, um, in the planning board's letter to us, you said that we could send some written comments, so my comments are all directly from the very first zoning board meeting on this back in April. And there were a number of things that were left hanging for the uh, Butters and the neighborhood to get answered. So when the second one he happened, uh, Lynn did not go through those things because she said that it was not her jurisdiction out of, to handle this. It was being passed to the planning board, so unfortunately, the neighbors next door, the Kirbys are away on holiday this week, so I'm not sure if they, they sent a letter maybe to the zoning board, but I don't know if they had time or got anything else, but I talked to them. Uh, so they're not available, but they too are interested in getting all of the questions answered that were first put forth at the very first meeting.
Alright, so in essence, the the eight or so questions that you've got in your letter are in your mind, um, still to be resolved, right?
Well, yeah, there's, yeah, there's a number of things in the, in the letter that need to get answered and discussed.
I believe Jason can speak to that as at the second ZBA meeting, he had, um, things that were going to take care of many of those questions regarding, um, as I remember, uh, sound, decibel readings.
It looks like you've, you've made an agreement that you'd operate Monday through Friday, eight to five. That still was the case? That's still your, your overall objective?
It is, Tim, yep. That's something we made, uh, the meeting that Karen is referring to, we did, uh, take those comments back, albeit they were verbal. I don't have anything in writing, but, uh, we did make those, uh, modifications to our site plan. Yeah, so everything is reflected on that and submitted to the planning board.
When you operate in other sites, how do you deal with the, i- i- I suspect that you frequently find yourself in a temporary situation, given the nature of your work?
Uh, most often, if we have to set up a temporary yard, yes.
And and how do you deal with issues like noise in those situations?
Uh, well, very similar to, very similarly to how we're gonna deal with it here. We are planning to install the, uh, I think on the site plan too, it references sound blanketing that we'd be installing along the fence. So the temporary fencing um, originally was planned to be, um, just a a standard fence. Uh, we're gonna plan to, uh, drive posts within, within the areas, uh, to have more stability to allow for sound blanketing, uh, for the duration of the project. So those will also be inspected and and maintained as we progress with the project, but, um, that's not something that's uncommon.
This letter, um, was that sent to the planning board too? Cuz I don't have it, I don't think.
Yeah, I sent it to the planning board, but the mailbox was full, so I had to go to the town clerk and the town clerks tended to keep counsel and counsel sent it to Lynn and whoever Lynn sent it to, I don't know.
Yeah, you you'll find it as an email to us from, uh, Eloise, the town clerk, Jay.
Oh, okay.
Did it go to, oh, it went to the planning board email?
Yes.
Right, cuz I didn't see it, Tim.
Yeah, bounced back this morning or yesterday, last night and this morning. I've tried it twice, but it's either your mailbox is full or other people have gotten it, but not the planning board. So that's why I had to go to Eloise this morning.
That's weird cuz I got email it all afternoon.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna forward it to the two of you right now.
Oh, I have it. Yeah, sorry, I just didn't check it. I do have it from Eloise.
Okay, I just sent it to you as well.
And, uh, yeah.
I do not have it.
I just sent it to you again.
Okay.
So Jason, review the, the, the truck route again for us, would you?
Alright, so the trucking route, um, as it states in Berlin, so the, the mall itself abuts, um, the border of Berlin and Marlboro. So technically, the only trucking route we'll have in, within the town of Berlin is within the Solomon Pond Mall. Uh, our trucking route to and from the excavation locations would be coming down. Uh, is it Donald Lynch Boulevard, I believe, um, that abuts the mall and and right into the mall. We're looking to utilize only the northern part of the mall uh, access points to get to the two sites. Um, and that's reflected again on the site plan that we have.
And then the, the trucks go on Donald Lynch and and where do they go on Donald Lynch? They go east?
Uh, they'll be going toward, towards Hudson, yeah, east, towards Hudson and the, um.
So past the hockey rink?
Yep.
And then they, they go over
River Road.
Yeah. Brigham, what was the name?
Uh, yeah, Brigham, once it's in Hudson, it's Brigham, I believe.
Yeah.
No, it's, isn't it still River Road in Hudson?
We're not, we're not, we're not planning to travel.
Oh, not up there. Sorry, yep, I, I was down a road, yes.
So past the hu, past the high school?
We're, we're planning to travel from, from the mall, from Donald, uh, along Donald Lynch Boulevard and then towards the center of Hudson.
And then you go through the center?
Not through the center. But at that point, I mean, we're out, we're outside of Berlin, but some portion, some portions would be down Brigham. Or along that other route here. I don't have the other route in front of me. But it'd be, they'd be traveling east. Yep.
Okay.
And you know about that tight little corner right there, right?
Yeah, we're, we've driven the route. Um, yeah, I was, uh, I was present. Um, I just kind of observed the, the mall once the, the buses were there and and I just just observed the area for, you know, transportation, uh, methods along everything. And when the buses were making the route, we'd be looking at triaxle trailers, which really are not uh, taller or longer than those, so navigating that route was, um, wasn't a problem.
Um, there doesn't happen to be anybody from Hudson or Marlboro in the audience, does there? If there were, and they wanted to come and I'd be interested in hearing. Um, but it doesn't look like there's anybody that's
No, I actually, so I work in Marlboro and I asked uh, the owner of the store that I work at, who's a lifelong Marlboro resident, what she felt about it. Um, because I wanted to get input from people who aren't familiar with you know, these kind of things. Uh, and she had two opinions. One was whatever it takes to keep the mall open. And that in her opinion, it would, if she saw the construction set up there, she would think something was happening at the mall.
Alright.
So, I, because I, that was one of my main concerns was that people would, um, be deterred from shopping at the mall by a construction yard ying in the parking lot.
We can also work with Shelley, too. I mean, I'm sure we haven't discussed this really, Shelley, but we can certainly post any kind of signage that says, you know, mall open during, you know, as yard is
Right, right. Yep, and
In truth, people, there is not much parking going on back there.
Right.
Even when you're going into the cinema, you're parking between the Macy's deck and the cinema. A lot of people who use that entrance, that lower level entrance that is adjacent to the play area are employees on the first floor at that end between Lens Crafters and to JCPenney.
Other audience members that have questions?
I wouldn't appreciate my letter getting answered.
Yeah.
There are a number of points in there.
Yeah, I'm working on that, Karen, and and I'm going to ask a few more questions in relation to it. But I thought while I'm doing that and making some notes, I'm going to allow anybody else in the audience that's got a question to go ahead.
Uh, so someone has raised their hand. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Liz Marie, and I live at the corner of River Road and Bridge. And we just had a concern with them using like Bridge Roads, Bridge Road as a cut through since the buses currently come out of the mall and then cut through Bridge Road and then down River Road. So that's our concern with the traffic because we're the only house at the top of Bridge Road.
So Jason, you don't have any intent to use Bridge Road? And and if you were to get permission to do this, we'd put a condition on this that wouldn't allow any use of Bridge Road. That would work for you?
I'm not too sure where Bridge Road is, but if it's off of River Road, I can tell you that we're not looking to utilize River Road for any trucking routes.
It's Bigelow in 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 Marlboro.
Bigelow.
And it connects to Bridge, crosses the Assabett and connects with River. It's the junction between Donald Lynch and and River Road. So you, it sounds like you're not going to use that. So that
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah, we're not planning to, we're not planning to travel west of the mall.
Now, this is east, east of the mall, behind Target.
Right, it's the first left after Target heading east.
Yeah, we're not looking to utilize that.
Okay.
I'm looking at it right here. It connects Donald Lynch Boulevard with River Road.
Correct.
Yeah, we're not, we're not looking to utilize that.
Um.
We do have another hand up.
Okay.
Michael.
Hi, I'm one of the butters on River Road. And I know
Can you get a little bit closer to your computer or your phone?
Sure. Yeah, sure.
That's much better.
Karen had put a list together of questions and we're if you want to comment, and I think anybody that's in the butter will agree that those of us on this side of the river experience a pretty big echo chamber from from the backside of the mall, given it's giving its So it's good to hear that sound blanket is going to be put up. But is there any sense of what DB levels are going to apply here? And and any sense of how noisy it's going to be during the working day?
So Michael, we did, we did do an in situ decimal reading for, I think this was a few months ago in the morning, around like 6:00 AM around the mall. And comparatively to what we're we're anticipating for any type of backup alarms or or truck traffic coming through, it was it was equal to, if not a bit less. And we're looking to utilize a sound blanket around the area like we had stated before. Something that's typically cut down on any type of additional decimal readings in the area on on past projects. So we don't anticipate anything above and beyond currently than what you what you're experiencing.
And we'll be there, will there be
No, that was actually one of Karen's comments before. We're looking to utilize the workspace from from Monday to Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So we're not looking to utilize any type of temporary lighting at the in the yard.
So Michael, we couldn't hear what that question was. So if you could repeat that and maybe get closer to your mic.
All right, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Relative to the soil retention bunkers, does that in itself restrict any contamination of the river?
We'll be, in addition to the bins that we'll have, the stage of the material, Michael, we're also going to have a series of, you know, what are called erosion and sediment controls around both the perimeter of the of the site, I'll say, like the the yard that we're looking to set up. Carolyn had also mentioned, you know, taking a walk prior to and after setup to see if there's anything else we'd want to install along the embankment, excuse me, of the river. And Paul McGinley, I'm sorry, McKinley again, I thought probably out Paul, but his group is there to to provide inspections of the site to make sure we're we're doing what we're what we need to do.
Right. And Michael, just so that, so you know, I'm also the chair of the Conservation Commission. So we're keeping a close eye on how this project, you know, making sure this project doesn't impact the river.
Last question for me. Obviously, trucking will go in and out, but what kind of onsite equipment, motors, et cetera, will be operating?
Yep. So we're planning to have one, at this time, we're planning to have one front end loader that would have a backup alarm. But the areas are primarily going to be used for material staging. So really, it's conduit lay down. So when we had deliveries of conduits, we'd be having, you know, some trailer very similar to what you'd see on the on, you know, the highway, it's 53 foot trailer that come through, front end loader would be offloaded, the material to stage it there, and then would remain onsite and like we said, that the soil deliveries would be really the only traffic we'd be seeing going in and out for our site.
Okay, that's all said for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
And Jason had spoken to this previously, that this is not the job site. So this is not constant eight hour construction going on all day long.
But again, Jason, review for us the number of trucks that you expect on a daily basis?
On on average, and again, our project, we're looking to have the the yard occupied for anywhere between 18 and 24 months, but the trucking portion of it, the soil trucking portion of it, wouldn't be ongoing for that duration. It'd be more of the summer months into the fall. On average, we'd probably have one truck coming in every 20 minutes. But at peak, you know, depending on the availability of the work, of the locations we're working, we could have one truck every eight to 10. So that's what we're, that's what we're currently planning on. But it's not for the entire duration of the of the property use.
Six to eight months?
I'd say that's fair. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Other questions from the audience? Or comments?
Chris, yep, Chris Keefe.
Okay, good. Thanks, Chris.
Chris, you're up.
Okay, Carolyn, I'm I, I'm on?
Yep.
Okay. I had been attending the ZBA hearings for the contractor's yard. And so the project is, could be as little as 18 months to 24 months. And I guess just my personal concern was that they are trying to find a tenant for Sears. And how likely is it going to be that we'll find a tenant when we've got this going on, plus buses in the back of the mall? The other question I had is that it didn't appear that Marlboro, who is our shares the mall with us, had been notified of this requested contractor's yard. And we probably should that Hudson is notified also with the trucking route. I I think it would be detrimental to the Solomon Pond Mall and shoppers to want to go there with all that business going on.
So I can, I can speak to points two and three. That was, those are all three of the points. The town of Marlboro was notified. We actually got a list of a butters from the assessor's office also. And we forwarded those to the group, I think it was two, two or three weeks ago for the meeting. We actually get, we had to get the list of a butters from Marlboro from from the town. The second portion, I'm sorry, the third point is that part of the project is also going to be within the town of Hudson. So they're aware of, they're aware of the work, they're aware of the trucking routes, they're aware of the general nature of the project.
And say, and they don't have a problem with the in going through the center of Hudson?
It's it's towards the center of Hudson, but it's not necessarily through it. Have they they're part of the mall?
No.
Shelley, do you want to comment on Chris's first question?
I do. That section of the mall has less than 10% of our visitors entering through there or passing through there based on our visitor data. And anytime with the Sears, yes, the Sears building is being marketed right now. First, it's going to take, if somebody signed an agreement today, it would take probably about three years to develop that. And when they come on site, we're talking developers. So that is not a deterrent to them. It kind of goes back to the the comment about the the non mall, non planning board person who said that they would think that there was activity going on. So when a developer sees development, they're not deterred from purchasing or entering into an agreement.
And I made some contact with some folks in Hudson that I work with to make sure that the planning board over there knew that the hearing was going to take place. Other folks in the audience?
Is that it?
Yeah, I guess so. I just wanted to make my feelings known about this.
Yep. I just, I didn't want to put you back unless you were ready.
Thank you.
I'm ready. Go ahead.
Okay.
So Karen's questions, 18 to 24 months is the duration that is being requested. And as I said, town council has suggested that the planning board might offer a temporary permit essentially. The noise issue, what Jason is saying is that the 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 level of noise at the mall, I guess is where you took your reading, Jason, not necessarily in the neighbors' yards, but in the at the mall, right?
Correct.
And in your determination, based on the ambient sound level that's there currently, is that anything you do isn't going to contribute to any increase, right?
Correct. Yeah, we've, when we've provided that, I'll say documentation to the planning board and the ZBA.
As for the earthworks, we don't have anybody from earthworks here tonight, I don't believe. And they will get involved in this at some point. Board of Health, there are only three sewer drains in the proposed area for the construction yard. We find with the proposed additional work being done and soils brought in that the three drains will not be adequate for an outdoor construction yard. Are there three drains tied to the Marlboro sewer system or do they empty directly into the Assabett River? So these are not sewer, these are storm, probably you're talking about stormwater management drains. Those, as I understand, go into the detention basins. And Carolyn can correct me if I'm wrong.
Right, which act as settling basins.
But the proposal that you're putting forward in terms of the management of the material that you're bringing in, Jason, is that you've you've got it in these cells, I guess is what I call them, or the concrete bins. One of the questions that can you want to, do you want to talk about the management of the soil again, a little more in detail?
Sure. And so what we'll have set up would be within, primarily right now, will be within Site One, which is the larger of the two sites, but a series of concrete enclosed bins. It's basically a, it's a U, the front is open. Those bin, the perimeter of our fenced in site would be have included in on it erosion and sediment controls, which would contain any soils that are brought into that site within that area. In addition to the actual sites, I think we we provided a couple of examples of some additional erosion sediment controls that can be used specifically for catch basins. Either a catch basin socket you just put over the cover. It's probably what we'll use in this scenario, just because they are within the roadway and they don't add. It's something you can put basically on the cover underneath that that won't utilize or won't allow for any sediment to run into the catch basin. That's most likely what we're going to be using in that area because it's most efficient and it it's, it works better.
And those will be maintained regularly also.
Could be part of our inspection process, yep.
Should the project go forward? We understand there will be a bond for cleanup. Is is that something that you've agreed to with with the, in your discussions with the ZBA when you were getting started on this?
That's not something I remember or recall, but I mean, we do have it's not outside of our realm to provide one if requested. I don't I don't believe that was requested, but.
We expect that the cleanup will extend beyond the mall boundaries if water, land are affected. Also, there are erosion controls being put into place and how, so you've talked about that. The second zoning board Zoom meeting was also supposed to provide the attendees and the butters the answers to questions raised at the first meeting. Lighting, you've talked about. So in the time of the year, when the sun begins to set before five, you, there would be no temporary lighting. You're just going to use vehicular lighting that's on the construction equipment that's coming in in the front end loader?
That's correct.
Okay.
And in the existing mall.
Temporary fence compressor operation, there's no, you don't have any compressors operating on this site. Those are all offsite. Maximum number of trucks, we've talked about eight to 10 at your maximum peak and then maybe eight to 10 minutes apart and then 20 minutes later. Trucks routes, we've talked about. I'm still intrigued by how you get through Hudson to go to Stowe without going through Hudson Center, but
Tim, if I could just address item C under there, the concrete bins, the question is, do they have a bottom or is it the parking lot floor? We're talking with Jason about adding adding filter fabric to the bottom as an additional layer of protection to keep the soils contained.
The noise barrier, you're, you've talked about your your additional sound buffers that are going to be installed, location of how many, so employees on this site would be fairly limited. Most no one's really going to be parking here.
No, we, no, we, the other thing I wanted to bring up, too, is that we also have a couple of restrooms that'll be staged there, you know, You know, a person at stage, we'd have a couple of porta johns that are set up. But the, but the yard itself would primarily be limited to, to the operator plus probably one or two laborers on site.
Yep. Three, maybe.
Yep.
And then in Karen's letter, she's made a general observation, Hudson, Stowe, and Sudbury all turned down the construction yard in their towns, even though the work is being done in their towns. Is, is that a fair statement?
No, this is, this is a location that the building inspector of Berlin had brought to our attention. It's, it's appealing to us because it is a paved area. Speaking to Shelley after we had reached out to her is that Sears is not occupied. We're hoping it's a win-win on both, you know, on both fronts. The fact that it is a paved area does, does benefit us though.
Did you, when, did you try to find sites in Hudson, Stowe, or Sudbury?
We have, we have a couple, but they're not, they're not as large as this one. So.
Right.
Yep.
You have a couple in mind or you have a couple that you're also gonna be using?
We have a couple that we're working, we're working through the same process now.
I see.
Yep.
Karen, I've tried to highlight what I consider to be the, the most relevant points. If, if I've missed something that you really feel needs to be addressed more fully, let's, let's, yeah, oh, you're still here with us. Good. What, what, what have I missed, Karen?
Well, I think you, you've captured the major items and I do appreciate, finally, since the first meeting that we have more information around it. Jason, you did. I think that the meetings are recorded, so you can go back to the first meeting. There was a discussion about the bond. So that, that was intimated to us that there was a bond in place. I think it behooves us as a town not to have a bond because obviously we have a lot of different things that come in one way and end up being done a very different way. So having a bond to protect us would be good. Also, it was your word, it was a direct question from me to you about why Sudbury, Hudson, and Stowe were not putting this project in there. And you had said very plainly that it was because they did not want the noise and they did not accept that they wanted the soils done in their town. So those are notes directly from you. Also, again, you can go back and listen to the recording. I think, you know, from our perspective in the neighborhood, you know that the neighborhood's very concerned. Michael raises a very good point and it needs to be taken seriously, which is the reverberations and the echo chamber here is very different from taking any kind of in situ noise level at the mall. You need to do it in the backyards of the Butters. And I would request that there is a meter set up and, you know, the noise from the Butters backyards, each of their backyards gets read. It is unbearable. And I think I'm being polite. There are other neighbors and Butters on the phone, but currently it is unbearable. And adding to it is really going to, you know, take away our quiet enjoyment of the neighborhood. And the project is a nuisance to us.
All right. Anything else, Karen?
Nope, that's it.
Other questions from the audience?
Chris?
Yep.
Chris Keith, yeah.
Were you clear, Tim, when you said this is an allowable use for the overlay district? Or not?
Town council felt that if the planning board was comfortable, we could offer a temporary permit for a use that wasn't allowed in the overlay.
Okay.
I, you know, personally, I guess I'd like to do a little more research and, and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that because I, I don't know what it means going down the road. I don't know what the implications would be if someone else were to seek a temporary, non-allowed use in a zone. And, and if we allow it here, how, how do you defend against, you know, allowing it? I don't know what the ZBA would do, I, you know.
Right. I think, for me, I think one of the ways that I could see clear is that the underlying use does allow it.
Yep.
So that is something to keep in mind.
But which, which zone trumps the other?
Well, that is the question, isn't it?
Yep, I think it was the question for the ZBA too.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, what town council said was that the planning board who oversees the overlay district for the mall has the authority in this case and that the ZBA who doesn't have authority for the overlay, it'd only have authority for the underlying pre-existing zone. You know, so it, it fell in our lap.
Right. Is, is there a benefit to Berlin to do this?
Well, I, I don't know how to answer that question. It's, one of the questions that was raised early on was, you know, how is this? I think Sue, Susannah raised it was, you know, how is it assessed? Is there some monetary benefit to the town, you know, if there's personal property? You know, how is it assessed? I, I mean, I think one thing we could certainly do is ask the assessors. I know in terms of the school buses, the school buses, sometimes when Diane Peterson was on the assessors, the town captured some of, some revenue as a result of that. I think more recently, we weren't aware that the school buses were there and I don't believe the assessors captured any revenue stream from that. The mall certainly benefited probably from the fact that the school buses were there and they would benefit as a result of this. And I think as.
Is there not something in the agreement that it does have to go back to the planning board and order? That's why I think this was sent back to you was because there was going to be a change to the parking area with this, with this contractor's yard and also the buses. There is something, I believe, in the agreement.
In the agreement with?
Solomon Pond.
You mean from, from way back in 90, in the development agreement from 94?
I guess so, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Because I know, I think Lynn was struggling with that. And my, my other question, I've come up with these since the last group of questions. So when we're bringing soil into Berlin, is this something that we're going to have to have Weston and Sampson be testing the incoming soil?
Well.
We, we, we knew there was a possibility that we might have to get earthworks involved.
I think earthworks does need to get involved. That's how I'd interpret this. If we were to provide some way to permit this, it seems as though the, the next step would be through the, well, they'd have to deal with the like kind soils by law or, you know.
Right. And that would be on the land, the, the contractor's yard group, I assume.
Right.
Unlike what the one we're working with now, which is on the town. Okay. Well, I just want to throw a few more questions out there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tim, we do have two more hands up. Matt Sonny raised his first and then Sue.
Well, let's hear from Matt then.
Okay. Matt? You need to unmute Matt. There you go.
Okay.
Big feedback there. Are you on two devices?
I'm trying to get off the second advice, device. Thank you. I think I've accomplished my goal, but now I'm still not sure.
We can hear you pretty well, Matt.
Okay. My concern at, at River Bridge is for our 204 neighbors, our property of Butts. And they've asked me to educate myself on exactly the noise levels. And I, in listening to the requests, eight to five, are we loading before eight? Are we turning engines on before eight? What's really happening? Are gates not open till eight o'clock for work to begin? I'm having a little trouble with what might be happening between seven and eight in the morning. And I don't want to do anything necessarily to dissuade development or helping the mall, but I do want to know how this noise might affect the people between seven and eight over at our apartments.
So Jason, my sense is that if, if the planning board were to permit this, you, we'd be fairly specific about eight because that's what you've said. So there'd be no engine activity before eight.
Correct.
Okay.
So gates would literally be locked till eight o'clock. In other words, we're not going to let the trucks come in and be idling, waiting to go. That's the type of noise that I just think would be incredibly irritating to our 204 residents as our property does a lot. I know you're doing tremendous efforts to cut down on the noise level. I'm just, the seven to eight worries me a little bit.
Yeah, we're, we're planning to have the, the site be an active site between eight and 5:00 PM, eight, 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM.
Right. So it'd be, it'd be dead quiet till eight o'clock in the morning.
Well, I'll say, I don't know if it'd be dead quiet, but we wouldn't be planning to contribute to any additional. Yep.
That's, that's a big, that, that's a big concern to our, to our people. And I'm going to chat with a few more people in town about this. After this, after this meeting, I'm going to make sure my, my residents, our, our management company is focused in a bit. But I want to be able to assure them that the town, town officials have kind of signed off on this if we decide to go forward and that they're very conscious of our 204 residents.
Anything else, Matt?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Susannah had another question?
Yep.
Hi again. I wanted to just touch on Lynn's concern with the parking. Because when you approved the, when you approved the parking, I'm sorry, the development plan, I, I'm looking for it in the overlay district bylaws here. When you approved it, you had a set number of parking spaces. And so this would change it and where is it? There's a lot of words in this section.
There's a requirement that there be a certain amount of parking based on the square footage of the mall. And what Lynn is suggesting is that we, we'll probably fall below that requirement.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, I can speak to that. It, it's based on the occupancy of the mall, the square footage that is used. And I, I think it's in the notes of the, the first couple of meetings that with Sears vacant, with the original linens and things, top and bottom floor, so the bottom floor of that is vacant, that we still exceed the parking ratio.
No, it was, it was beyond that. It had to do with approval of the actual development plan, not the occupancy. So it would require more detailed reading than in a meeting when I'm really tired, but and I wish Lynn were here to explain it better. But because the development plan was approved with X number of parking spaces, that the planning board had to make sure that, now I've lost it. If I find it, I will send you an email, but there was something about approval of the development plan and subsequent changes to that needed to be approved by the planning board. So I think I've got it now. You're not just approving this for use, but you have to also approve the change in the number of parking spaces. I think that's how I remember it. And I'm just going to stop talking now.
Well, we can check into that. I mean, I think what Shelley is talking about is what I recall in regard to ratio, but we can check with Lynn to see if there's some other facet of the parking issue that we haven't addressed.
Yep, that would be good because I knew it had to do with what was originally approved versus now.
Good.
Thanks, Sue.
You're welcome.
Everybody all set?
I don't see any more hands.
All right. What's your pleasure, board? Do you want to continue this hearing or do you want to close it? Tom is not here, which I mean, part of me would like to allow Tom an opportunity to participate in this, this discussion and continuing the hearing to the 12th would give, would provide that opportunity. So, you know, I guess, what are people's thoughts?
I think there's still a, a bunch of questions that we need some more information on too. I make a motion to continue this hearing until July 12th.
Do we have a second?
Jay, you're muted. Jay, you're muted. Still muted.
Operating, yeah, I can second that.
Any discussion? All right, roll call. Go ahead, Jay.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, roll call. Carolyn?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
I appreciate that this isn't moving as quickly probably, Jason, as you'd like it to, but I, I'm without the chair here and the fact that, you know, I really appreciate Tom's input. I think it's helpful for us to hold off another two weeks and, you know, close the hearing at that point.
Oh, understood.
And Carolyn, if, if you've got some specific issues that you feel Jason might be able to address for us between now and the next time we meet, that'd be helpful, probably.
Yeah, no, I feel like we're in alignment with what, he knows what we're going to be looking for. And you know, until the decision to, as to whether it's even going to happen or not is made. I'm not, I, I, I mean, Jason, do you? I, I feel like we've been pretty clear about what we're looking for, for, from conservation.
Yeah, I would agree. I agree.
I'm, I'm prepared to reach out to the earthworks group and to the assessors in regard to their input. And I think if, if Jason could do a little homework on what they might have used for a bond in past circumstances, that might give us some insight as to what we might utilize here.
Eloise has her hand up.
Go ahead.
What time on January, on July 12th? You continued the public hearing until what time?
Well, of course, till eight.
Thank you.
Right, Carolyn?
Uh, yeah, that was my motion.
I heard it.
Yeah.
Okay.
You missed that, Eloise.
Thank you, Eloise.
All right.
I have, I have one other question for Jason. That is, um, is there flexibility in the duration of the, the term of this deal?
Uh, I'll say that we're, I'll say that we're hoping it's closer to 18 months. Um, but I think for right now, as stated, 18 to 24 months is, is what we're planning to uh, to work with.
So if it were 12 months, you wouldn't want to do it?
No, I would say if it were, if it were 12 months, um, we'd be open to it if there was a possibility for an extension. Um, I know when we did speak to the Z B A before, um, you know, we had discussed the term. Uh, I think we had limited it to, to 24 months. And if it had the, the option to extend past it, we would just go through this process again and have to, um, I guess reapply for a extension. Um, but what we're, what we're presenting to the planning board right now is 18 to 24 months. But we wouldn't be opposed to 12.
I see. And then Karen had suggested that we could come to her property and listen to what sound is like currently. Or maybe we could simulate what's going to go on over there because I, 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 the big issue here is I think appears to be noise and, and um, it's hard to judge that when you haven't been there and heard it. And that's app for the, uh, for the apartments. I have no idea whether, how defensive the sound's going to be over there. You may not even hear it. It may be real bad. I don't, I don't know.
Is that a question for me, Jay? I'm sorry. Um, was there, was there a question to me on that? I'm sorry.
Well, I wonder if maybe one of the Butters would let us invite us to come to their property and, and listen at some point. Someone wanted to raise their hand and offer that.
Oh, Karen, hold on. Me. Hold on. Karen, you had your hand up and then it went down.
No, that's just, you know, the goofiness of the
Okay, just a second.
Um, yes, you know, I would be delighted to have anyone come sit on my back deck and listen to the noise as I'm sure um, others would. I do travel quite extensively, so I would have to have a lot of advanced notice um, to either prep someone to be here if I'm not here on the dates you want to come or uh, whatever. But I think in my email to you, I gave a phone number and hopefully you'll have my email address. You can contact me that way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
One more hand up.
Um, yes, I'd be willing to let them come to, we live on 195 River Road West, too.
Very good.
We don't, I don't know if we have your contact information, but
Right, um, can you send?
Send an email to the planning board, um, mailbox.
Okay.
Planning board, it's planningboard@townofberlin, right?
Yeah, if I didn't get your email, Karen, there, there must be something wrong with the um, address because I've been getting
Got it here. It's on her letter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. We'll uh, we'll close the, we'll adjourn the hearing, continue the hearing until the 12th at eight.
Okay, uh, Karen does have her hand up again.
Okay.
I just want to clarify because in the letter that you sent out, it says planning@townofberlin.com, not planning board. And so I sent it to planning@townofberlin.com and it got sent back. Is it planning or planning board? Is the email address wrong in the letter?
Let me just check here. No, it's planning board. It's two words.
Okay, so there is, there is the, in your letter you sent out, it's the wrong email address.
Oh.
Yeah, if you read it, the second paragraph, the last sentence, um, says, interested citizens may present oral feedback of the hearing or may send written comments to the planning board prior to the hearing via email to planning@townofberlin.com. But it's planning board, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
All right.
Thank you.
Good night, Shelley. Good night, Paul. Good night, Jason.
Good night, John Boy.
Yeah, right?
Bye.
Thanks again.
Oh, thank you.
What's up next?
We're running late. We're going to do Emily and Emily is uh, and then we're going to do uh, 139 Coolidge, the Gulf. Um, but we won't spend as long on Emily as we allotted because Emily won't ask that much more time of us anyway. So let's promote Emily.
Yep, she should be coming up here any second. I hope. I think. Yep, there she is.
Thank you for your patience, Emily.
Hi.
No problem.
You don't have a life anyway, right? You work for a planning agency.
I wasn't going to go to trivia tonight. It's fine.
Yeah.
Um, so so I'm just going to, I'm here to give an update on the survey. Um, the housing survey that's been out since May. Um, so last I checked, um, well, today we have 99 responses, which isn't really what the, we were aiming for, unfortunately. Um, so I have a couple of things to propose. Um, I'd love to keep it out a little bit longer. And um, I was wondering how the board feels, uh, if we were to do a direct mailing postcard, um, take a little bit of money out of the budget that's already been allocated for this project. Um, and uh, I will take care of everything. This is something that I've done uh, for other towns to promote surveys. Um, so it would basically be a, a postcard that gets sent to every uh, P O box and mailing address in town. Um, and it would have the survey link and code on it and we could include any other um, information uh, about this planning process on the postcard. Um, I've drafted up one. I can share my screen um, to give you a sense of what it would look like. So I'm just trying to get your thoughts on that, um, about extending uh, the deadline and doing this uh, as a method of outreach.
I think it's a good idea.
I like it.
Yep.
When, someone who was unaware of it was asking why we hadn't done a direct mailing.
Scan the QR code. Good. Yep. What's your sense about how much it'll cost?
I think it'll be less than 500. Um, so I think between four to 500, but we haven't used a lot of the budget already. Um, and we have plenty left. And since this is an update to existing plans, I don't have to spend as much time, you know, writing the plan because there's, I'm going to be using a lot of language that's already in there. So I really want to focus on the public outreach part. That's such an important part of this plan.
Now, it, I mean, we do have money in our budget for printing. Um, and I don't think it, it necessarily says printing zoning bylaws. I think it, it's a, it's, and we, we often don't utilize it. So if if, if we think about it, it may make sense for us to expend that out of that budget and, and leave you flexibility um, going forward.
Okay, um, I think it would cost about um, around 200 to do the printing and then it's around 250 to do the mailing.
So what we'll do is we'll check and make sure that that budget's still intact and available. And then, um, you know, you can go ahead and do what you're proposing. And you can bill us independently for that if we determine we've got those funds. And then that gives us an extra 500 down the road if we decide we need it. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds good to me. Yeah.
Do we know, do we know that we have and not, that we still have paper copies at those three locations?
I picked up the paper copies at the town clerk's office. No, I didn't do the town clerk's office. I did 19 Carter. And I did, um, I didn't go to the library again yet, but I got one more survey from 19 Carter and I got, I think I've probably got about five or six right now that I'm going to send you.
But I mean, so if we're going to send out this mailer, we need to make sure we have blank paper copies that we still have blank paper copies at those locations.
And we will.
Okay, that's all. That's all.
Cause I was collecting those from a couple of places. So I've, I've got blanks that I can, I put the boxes back out and I'll put the blanks back out as well. What's your timetable on that, Emily?
Um, well, I would say we can get them mailed out maybe in um, it depends. Last time I did this, the post office was so backed up, so it took longer, but I think it shouldn't. That was around Christmas of like uh, 2021, when everything was crazy. Um, but uh, probably two weeks, maybe a week and a half because you have to order them and then it takes them like three days to ship. Um, if you do it through this company that I typically do it uh, through, um, it's called Next Day Flyers. Um, so under two weeks, I would say.
Okay. Good.
Great. Um, is there anything in there that I should include other than the survey? Um, because our next step in this is to promote um, like a housing workshop. And I think we were aiming for the fall to hold one. I'm guessing it's too early to kind of select a date for that, but I just thought I'd throw it out there.
Yeah, we're still talking. Well, it's only, if you're going to ship it out in two weeks though, that, that could potentially just be eight weeks early, right? So maybe we should um, think about a date. And so to say, save the date for Housing Workshop on September such and such. Does that make sense? And then announce it again later as we go closer into mid-August or something. Carolyn, Jay, any thoughts?
Um,
It's simple.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's
Yeah, I think you're just going to confuse people.
So you'd say, wait.
Yeah.
All right.
I don't know what's on page two of the postcard. I can sort of read it, but you can't.
Yeah, I um, because I definitely talked to some people who didn't understand what the survey was even asking about. And I feel like this explanation helps take a little of that mystery out of it.
Yeah, I believe it the way it is. I think it's a good idea.
We could always include like a link to some page on the town website and say, stay tuned for more information. Um, I don't know which site would be best. Uh, planning board or if you have like an economic development page or housing page.
You could put a comment at the end of the survey about it. I don't think very many people go to our website. Painful.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah, maybe a comment at the end of the survey saying, you know, housing, you know, something, a workshop to be held in the fall. Check the website for information or something. Uh, Eloise has a comment?
I just looked at September and you have two meetings then, so that would be the September 13th or the 27th, I believe. I just want, I just want you to stay away from an election. Harry.
Yeah, and I, we'd probably
We have early voting in, in mid-October.
Yeah, we'd be doing this in September, but I, I would think we'd do it on a night other than a regular planning board meeting, given the nature of the project, so.
I stand corrected. Thank you.
I mean, I, it's not for me to decide, but uh,
Yeah, it's usually like a two hour kind of presentation, interactive activity, so it would be separate.
Good.
Yeah, we can determine the date at a different time.
Yeah, and it'd probably be good when Tom is back.
Right.
Pull down a date. Anything else, Emily?
Um, I don't believe so. No, that, those are just the few things that I had. Um, so if this looks good to everyone, um, I might tweak it a tiny bit, some of the colors or something, but um, otherwise, yeah, this is what I'll be, I'll be printing.
Great. Any questions, guys? Any other comments?
Do we need to vote?
Yep. Got a motion?
I make a motion that we send out a direct mailer to increase participation in the housing survey.
And, and potentially utilize?
And potentially pay for the mailing.
Good. And Jay seconded it.
One, this might, uh, do we want to extend the survey to a certain date?
What do you think? You want to go to mid-July? I mean, mid, mid
Right, so you have the, end of July on your thing here. But if it's going to be two weeks till it goes out, that's only another two weeks. Which I guess if anyone's going to do it, that's, they're going to do it sooner when, from getting the mailer than not. True?
I would assume, yeah.
You happy with that date, Jay?
Uh, yep.
All right, go for it. Do we have a second?
The date again.
The 30th.
30th, okay.
Do we have a second to Carolyn's motion?
Yeah, me.
All right, um, roll call. Carolyn?
I.
Jay?
I.
Tim?
I.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you, Emily.
Excellent. All right. I'll be in touch about the, the next meeting that I should attend to give an update.
All right. Sorry to hold you up so long.
No worries at all. And have a good night.
Good night.
Now, next.
Next.
139.
Right.
And we have James. Who do we have?
We have, Robert Lucier has his hand up.
Very good.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Sorry to hold you up, but I
Oh, no problem.
Right. And then, uh, Michael Durant also. Yes. Promote him as well.
I'm sorry, I just got disconnected a bit as my, uh, could you repeat that?
Is Michael with you?
Yeah, so Mike Durant is with Nerea. So if you could please uh, bring him in as well, that would be great.
Anybody else?
I believe that is it.
All right.
From our group. So, um, so yeah, so good evening, everyone. My name's Rob Lucier. I'm with C M G Engineering. Um, with me is also Mike Durant from Nerea, the, uh, the applicant or representative from uh, the owner and operator of the uh, existing gas station.
Good evening. I'm having trouble with my video. Uh, just give me a moment. Mike Durant with Nerea Energy.
Hello, Mike. Um, so if you'd like me to start So if you'd like me to start, Mr. Chair, I don't know.
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay.
You're a screen or?
Yeah, I think that would be best, so let me.
That'd be fine.
There's a heck of a lot of numbers on that plan. Yeah, that one.
This one? If you're, that, yeah, it's, it's a pretty busy plan. I will admit that. So this is the existing conditions plan. So I know it's getting late and I know that there's another hearing after us, so I'll try to be as brief as possible. But just to kind of explain where we are and why we're here. So we have basically been in charge to look at the property at 139 Coolidge Road and 343 Old Central Street. To see if there's a way to redevelop and improve the site. We're still in the preliminary conceptual phase currently. We met with the zoning enforcement officer, Richard Hanks, last month, just to kind of go over our concept plan and the approach that we wanted to do to get, you know, to, to the permitting phase of the project. The meeting was extremely helpful in outlining how the process should work in Berlin. And one thing that Mr. Hank said was we should really get in front of the planning board for just a preliminary discussion, just to discuss where we are with the conceptual phase and see if you have any thoughts before we go in front of ZBA since I, I did hear earlier that the planning board is in receipt of the building commissioner's letter, which outlines, there's quite a few hurdles that we're gonna have to look at with developing the site. Including, which, just before I kind of get into this, we also met with the Board of Health as well last month to discuss the project as well. Since there is also some, some hurdles that we have to, to conquer on the Board of Health side. And that meeting actually went very well. It sounds like they agree with our approach. And I can get into more of that, you know, if the board is interested. But just to kind of go over the, the overview of the project. So this is the existing conditions plan. I believe this was submitted to the board. I believe you're, you might be aware, a little bit of what we're proposing here. But there's two parcels. On the left-hand side, there's an existing single-family house, which that is 343 Old Central Street, which is this parcel. It has an existing single-family house, a garage. And then there is remnants of a concrete mat, which I believe was part of the auto repair facility that was on the site previously. So that building is gone now, but the concrete mat is still there. And then the right-handed side of the property, so that's a separate lot, that's 139 Coolidge Road, which has the existing gas station on it with three dispensers on the front along the Coolidge Road frontage, and then about a 2,000 square foot convenience store gas station building. As shown. So what? And I also should mention that the the existing gas station is serviced by septic and has, it is also connected to municipal water from Hudson, which is very nice. And then the existing single-family house has a well and that one is also serviced by septic, a septic system as well. So what we're proposing to do is just demolish the existing structures on both lots, consolidate the lots and create a more aesthetically pleasing and a a more state-of-the-art fuel station. So it would include a 4,500 square foot convenience store building for fuel dispenser islands instead of three, and they would be orientated a different way. Cause right now, the fuel dispenser fueling positions are parallel with Coolidge Road. These ones will be perpendicular, so cars will be either facing the road or facing the building. And then we're also gonna be proposing a septic system for the site. It will still continue to be serviced by municipal water from the town of Hudson. Everybody can see this, correct? The proposed plan? Okay, perfect. Just making sure. Sometimes when I switch screens, when I'm sharing screens, it doesn't upload, so glad to hear it. So this, the blue line shows the consolidated lot and the purple is the convenience store and the canopy. And then in the back, we would have green space with the septic system to service the convenience store. And then I believe we also submitted a, just a sample, Nerea architectural elevation for the building. I, I believe the planning board has that. Is that correct? So. Which actually is, is this plan. So this is just a sample one, what the building might look like. And with that, that's just the basic overview of what we're, we're looking to do. We want to get in front of the zoning board of appeals in the near future with a full bore site plan designs. That will include grading, drainage, architectural elements such as this, but a little bit more in-depth for the parcel. And, yeah, so it'll be a full bore site plan review submission to the zoning board of appeals in the near future. But like I said, it seemed to make sense to get in front of the, the planning board for just some preliminary comments. If there's anything you would like to add, we'd greatly appreciate it so we can, you know, potentially, you know, implement it in the, the actual site plan design. So with that, I, I would love to answer any questions or, or hear any input that the board may have. I will switch back to the proposed plan and. Yeah.
Has there ever been any consideration of trying to acquire the parcel to the west of this one?
You are referring to, I think on this one, it's map 21 lot 53. I don't know if you can see my cursor. You're referring to this lot?
Yes.
Um, I'm not sure. I'm, Mike, if you want.
I, I can speak to that.
Sure.
I think we had tried to open negotiations and, and just were unsuccessful with that, that particular property owner.
The reason I ask is that, that, that property owner has attempted to speak to the board about possible uses for that parcel, which, given its size constraints, really, really limit the options that are available. And I encouraged them years ago to speak to, well, I don't know if Nerea was in play at that point, but I, I mean, in essence, I said, someone ought to combine these three lots and do something seriously good. Instead of, you know, this piecemeal, totally inadequate approach that was, you know, there currently. So I'm pleased to see you guys move forward with something that's combining the two lots at least. But I mean, I'd encourage you if they have come to us and not come up with any proposal whatsoever that made sense. And given the size of that lot, I don't see how they'll ever be able to come to the board. Given the square footage of that parcel, the footprint of the building for them is, is, you know, tiny. And when they get into the green area and parking issues, they have more constraint than even you do. So where you're looking for variances for size of the building, parking spaces and green area, I'd still, I mean, I, I'd suggest if you don't mind, just reach out to them one more time because to me, given that extra space, that really allows you guys to accomplish exactly what you want to accomplish without having to request these, uh, these variances. At least I would think that you'd be close to a position where the only one would be the 4,000 square feet, which right now you're at three, but 4,000 square feet is the cap on commercial parcels. Unless they want to utilize the section of the bylaw that like pure hockey down here in the southern part of town used years ago where they protected some land off-site in order to allow to build a significantly larger structure. But I, I mean, overall, I'm pleased to see an attempt to enlarge the parcel and the footprint and, and and clean up the whole process there. Makes a lot more sense. I'm concerned about the need for three variances that are not minor. I mean, they're significant, but you know, again, I'd encourage you to reach out to that parcel owner next door to you and see if they'd come to reason, because I, whenever they've spoken to the planning board in the past, we haven't seen a way forward to find a, a solution to their problem. And to me, it's just a parcel that's sitting there with, you know, zero potential.
That's not the lot that.
They tore the house down.
But isn't that the lot that the Highland Ridge people wanted to put that, one of their group homes?
Oh, yeah.
Right. And I believe, yeah, I know. But at the time that he was talking about that, didn't he say that the parcel was on the market?
Well, I thought that's why he was looking at it as a possible use for, you know, their need, but.
Right.
I would imagine you folks from Nerea have been talking to the butter more recently than than Akasa was talking to them. Maybe not, but if not, I'd reach out. That's all I have. Jay, questions? Carolyn, any other questions?
Well, I'm just looking at the list of.
No, go ahead, Jay.
Yeah. No individual variance is huge, but there's a lot of them.
Right. Agreed. Yeah, it's something that we're definitely gonna have to look at. And definitely key is to get in front of the zoning board of appeals. We would have loved to have an advisory meeting with a ZBA. I'm not sure if that's possible based on some discussions that we had with the building commissioner. We still love to hear some initial feedback from them to see if, you know, it's like you said, there are a fair amount of variances associated with the development of, of the project. I think the key item is that, you know, there is an existing convenience store and, and gas station on the parcel that definitely could use some, some renovation and some improvements, I think, to be better suited for the community. And that's what we're trying to, to capture here. That being said, of course, it does require variances with, you know, the, this, it's really the spatial limitations of the site.
You know, looking at this, at the parking that's available here. So the, the other Nerea site, the one on the south end of Berlin, if you go down there in the morning, the, there's just not enough space for what's going on down there. I think everyone was surprised at the popularity of the location. And it's very difficult to get in and out and with a car, no less a truck. And this doesn't look a lot larger. In fact, it looks about the same, maybe even a little smaller than what's going on down there. So I'm not sure if we want to perpetuate that problem.
I mean, that site has 10 filling slots as opposed to eight. I, I look at this site as potentially carrying a hell of a lot more use than, than that one does.
Sure.
I mean, 62 carries what? Over 10,000 cars a day. I think River Roads not, not up to that number yet. Granted, you are close to 290.
495, you go down there on a weekend, especially a nice weekend, towards the end of the day on a Sunday, and every state is an out, every car is an out-of-state plate.
Right.
Pulling off the highway for gas and coffee or whatever. This is right at the end of my street, so I am very familiar with this site. And I mean, people park on the vacant lot anyway and just walk across the woodchips.
Yeah.
Well, but even with that, it's frequently jammed.
Yeah, very often, yes. So I guess two things that I want, first I want to ask, so in the bylaws, we don't allow parking in front of the building. That is one of the things that Richard listed that would need to be addressed. How was, yeah, how was the other lot, how was the other Nerea on the other side of town? How would, how was that approved? Was that through a variance?
Frontage, the, the, it, the parking at that site, we're in an overlay for one thing. So it's got its own stipulated language in regard to parking and all sorts of other things. And the site plan ends up going through the planning board, not through the ZBA. So we have, we had flexibility because it's the overlay. I, I think we both, we all felt that because there was structure facing the rotary, facing River Road, facing Whitney. You know, where is the front of the building and where is the side yard and all that sort of stuff? So, you know, if you think about it, the parking's between the motel and, and the gas station, the majority of it. So it, it, it actually probably does closer conform than than you'd think at first glance, you know, in regard to the parking in front stuff.
And then just the other thing that I think I can probably speak for a majority of people is no drive up. Don't plan it. Don't ask for it. It's a very sore subject in town. You, you're not gonna make any traction. Just don't even do it.
Are you referring to a drive-through window facility?
Yes, for the Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay, yeah, um, yeah, we, we were forewarned during conversations.
Just telling you now.
No, absolutely.
That is a non-starter everywhere.
Good to know.
When you could drive from Coods, you drive from, yeah, Coods Street over to Old Central.
Yeah.
Where is, where's the front of this building, you know, it's like.
Well, the, the whole parcel is in Berlin, correct? None of it's in Hudson.
There's a line in the drawing there.
Correct, yeah. So this is the Hudson Town Line, right, right here.
Right.
So, yes, the whole parcel's in Berlin.
Yeah.
And I guess just to, to speak to the parking as well. You bring up a, a great point and I, I agree that, you know, parking is definitely, when it comes to these uses, is extremely important. And I'm sure Mike will, will agree with me that, you know, if this does, if this property does get developed, we really do hope that it is busy. And I hope that, you know, it does see a lot of traffic and, and a lot of, you know, it, it generates a lot of, of interest in the community. The issue that we have with the parking in particular, and especially the variance where parking isn't allowed between the front of the building and the roadway is that if you look, we have Old Central Street behind us, and then this is Coolidge Road in front of us. So essentially, we can't have, based on the bylaws, without getting relief. You can't have parking behind the building or in the front of this building here, because it's technically considered frontage. So really, if the, if this, this property is going to be developed, it's gonna be extremely difficult to develop it without getting some type of relief in order for the parking count. Additionally, if we wanted to increase the parking, which there are, I'm sure there are ways we can do it. It's gonna be tricky, but the other problem that we have is now we're getting into that 50% green area requirement. So really, if, if we're looking at these improvements, we gotta kind of balance out. really, if, if we're looking at these improvements, we gotta kind of balance out what would be the best use of the space. And we want to make sure that um, you know, the planning board, zoning board, basically the town is going to agree that, okay, if we need more parking, we need more parking. If we need more green space, we need more green space. How can we make these work and balance on the site? Because there's so many site constraints with it uh, for, for the uh, size of the, of the uh, parcel. Um, so basically, I agree with, with your, with your comments, and, and we really would like to um, to address the, the parking and, and such.
I'm wondering if the amount of parking that you've shown is actually less than what's there today with the, with the uh, adjacent lot that's being used.
Sorry, could you repeat that? I, I didn't, was that a question?
Wondering if the, if the number of parking spaces that you're showing, you're drawing is actually less than what's, than what's there today with the adjacent dirt lot that they seem to be using.
Um, so we're showing twenty-eight spaces, I believe, or hold on, let me go back.
Right. I mean, most people just park right up against eh, on the dirt lot, up against the, um, you know, like really, I wish, I wish you could see where I'm pointing. So.
You talked, I assume.
So from where the end of the building is, if you went straight across west. Exactly. So people generally don't park any further back on that lot than that straight line.
I do.
Do you?
And there's usually somebody next to me. Depends what time of day.
Yeah.
So. Is that because you have the trailer or?
Dump truck, yeah.
Um.
Well, I know, so existing parking on the site, there's six marked spaces on this side, and then there's two spaces, including the uh, handicap accessible space um, on the right side of the building. So there's eight spaces altogether for that building, for this uh, um, existing site. And then I don't really know how to quantify. I mean, we could look at, you know, okay, if you were to have a typical uh, um, nine foot or eight foot, no, nine foot wide by eighteen foot wide space and the orientation, how many could you fit here? Um, I, I would imagine, even if it's less parking, which I don't think it will be, but if it were less parking, the one nice thing that we will have, if it, if it, things were developed per our, our concept, is that you're eliminating a curb cut here, and you're gonna have more of a nice flow with egress out of the site. Um, that should work better with traffic flow. Cause I know that that was also another item that was brought up in the building commissioner's letter was the curb cuts, which we can look at that as well to see if we can get away from a variance for that. But, you know, we have to take a look, get more into um, you know, the, the tanker truck fill patterns and stuff on the site to see if we can accommodate. Hopefully that answered your question. I, it may have just made it more confusing, and I apologize.
The, the issue is, what's this gonna look like after it's built? If it's built according to your plans, right?
Yeah.
And look at the number of cars that are typically there for several hours in the morning. I would say on average, there's probably six cars at least where Carolyn was talking about, where it says boulders on your drawing there. And sometimes people like me park on the other side. So you've got somewhere between six and ten cars on that side, as well as all those spaces, whatever, there's eight spaces on the right full. So that could be as many as eighteen cars. There's probably gonna be more when this is upgraded. Right? So are we gonna be designing something that's gonna be, you know, cars are gonna be trying to pull in from Pootwood Street, you know, lined up because there are no spaces to get to and just create a big nightmare for parking and traffic congestion. That's, that's what the issue is.
Understood.
This is already very popular. This will make it more popular. It's gonna be a lot of cars, and it's not working that well down the south end of town.
So is, I would imagine the building, the proposed building size is based on all kinds of standards for this franchise. I assume it's a franchise.
Yeah, I believe Mike can speak to that.
Uh, yes, so we are a privately owned company. Uh, we're not franchised at all.
Okay, so, I mean, do you need the building to be that big? Do you need it to take up that much of the space that it's create? I mean, if you made it to three thousand, you'd get your green space, you'd get your extra parking, you, you know, is it just something to think about?
Uh, yeah, I can speak to that. So the size of the building uh, is based off of our, our new layout um, uh, from the uh, uh, retail folks uh, where they lay out the store. Uh, plus, this would also have the um, the, the Dunkin' Donuts uh, operation inside the building. So that fair footage is accounted in that forty-five hundred square foot layout. So essentially, we, we would need uh, that, that forty-five hundred square foot. And actually, that would be one of the smallest buildings that we would construct.
How big is the one on the other side of town?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Right. I just, I also find them, new convenience stores have a boatload of open space. And I'm, I'm assuming that's based on some sort of market research, but it makes me feel uncomfortable.
All right. Um, can we help you in any other way tonight? Um, because we've got, of course, one more topic here on our agenda.
Um, no, I mean, just the preliminary feedback is really what we were looking for. And, and based on what I, my notes is that looking at the property to the west is, is a recommendation as well as seeing if we can capitalize on parking. And then, of course, we still need to figure out the green space if we do more impervious. So we definitely, uh, we have a, a lot to, to look at. Um, you know, when we, when we start developing the site plans. But I really appreciate the, the preliminary feedback and taking time tonight to discuss. If there's any other recommendations that the planning board may have, I, you know, greatly appreciate it, but um, no, th- this has been very helpful. And I hope that the um, that the the view of the board is that you, you do feel that maybe this, the improvements, maybe not as exactly shown here, but improving the gas station will be a benefit to the community. Um, so that, that was pretty much the, the gist of why we, we wanted to be here. And I, Mike, if there's anything else you wanted to add um, as well.
Uh, no, I really appreciate the uh, feedback and commentary here from uh, the planning board. Uh, this is exactly what we were seeking. Uh, certainly helps and glad to hear that um, if, you know, if we combine these lots and redevelop this site, that it would be um, for the community.
Well, great. And good luck in uh, you know, calling us anytime. We're happy to, whereas one thing a planning board can do, we can, we can uh, share thoughts and, and sort of review proposals a little more fluidly than the ZBA can. Um, you know, they end up in a, in a different situation as a result of their role, so. Good.
Absolutely. All right. Well, thank you again, everybody. And uh, you know, thank, thank you for slugging through all the way to, you know, it's almost ten o'clock now. So greatly appreciate it.
All right.
And.
Thank you both.
Thank you. And uh, I'm sure we'll talk to you soon as we move through the process.
Great. All right.
Thank you. Have a great.
Carolyn, can you bring up John Campbell?
I can.
Hi, John.
Good night. Thank you for staying up so late. Holy cow.
Thanks for your patience.
Oh, no, no. Tim, when I got your email and it was nine thirty, I thought you meant nine thirty in the morning. Guys never rest, do you? Thanks for taking the time to hear from.
This is a slow night, John.
Oh, you're kidding. But you know, you get paid the big bucks, right? So.
That's right.
Right, right. This is our penance for meeting once this month instead of twice.
I will try to be brief. I think you all know why I'm here. But I'll just give you a real quick recap. Um, a couple of years ago, the sign that's been in front of Berlin Memorial School for not forever, but for a long period of time blew down. And right after it blew down, we were kind of in the middle of COVID. We went without a sign for a while. And I thought, well, geez, a new sign would be really cool, and a new electric sign would be even cooler. And um, unaware as I was of the many, many rules that I was about to break. We just went ahead. We got quotes and we talked to people and it was gonna be great. And um, we thought for the last second, geez, there's probably some like permit thing we'd need. And that kind of started us down this path. And then, so please accept my apologies. It's lack of experience. We didn't realize or didn't think about kind of reaching out to folks earlier. Um, so we ended up in front of the ZBA for a little while, and they encouraged us to, you know, first we had to reach out to the select board because it's not school property that we want to put a sign on. And they were okay with that part. Um, and I'm in front of you, because I think the, the concern that people have, I, I kind of anticipated this might be an issue, is the um, the sign is electric. It's an LED sign. Um, and uh, there are many, many zoning bylaws that say that's not a good thing. So we've kind of approached them about making an exception for us. And, and I'll tell you why I'm looking for the exception, and I would love your feedback on uh, on, on, on next steps, um, and your comfort level. You know, we were, we're super concerned, and I've said this at every meeting I've been at. The town is so supportive of the elementary school. And I don't want this to in any way impact that. You know, whatever we decide as a community, or the community decides. I always do that. I don't actually live in Berlin. But whatever the town decides is certainly what we'll do. Um, let me tell you why I think an electric or an LED lighted sign would benefit our community. Um, in the past, the stationary sign that we had, basically it was me going out there once a month to put the new letters up. Um, somebody asked me at uh, select board why it was me. It was because I tried to delegate it, but we had spelling problems, and it didn't really look good for the elementary school. Misspellings on the sign. But the reason that we, so we were thinking that if we had a sign that was electronic, the, the real goal was to kind of expand its use. Um, because the school is, and it's one of the things I love about BMS, it's the center of the community. You know, it's where the kids play soccer. It's, you know, where parents come to kind of play in the playground there for hours. We get a ton of traffic. And so my goal was, because we already kind of do it like through my newsletter and stuff, advertising things in town. You were talking before, when I first signed on about the housing survey. That was in my newsletter. Uh, but my goal with the sign is to have something where we can add notices for the town, it's election day, it's time to pay your taxes, things that are happening at the library or Nineteen Carter. We can build those into um, a sign of them, constantly keep the community better informed. Um, it also helps in terms of things that come up at the last second. You would be surprised on snow days how many parents still want to bring their children to school. Um, and it would at least save them the drive down the driveway if they saw on the sign, school closed today. Um, we have reached out, I, because I like the idea of the electric sign, but I had to kind of do more research on its limitations. The sign itself can be turned on and off. Um, because I know one of the concerns that our neighbors have is light pollution. And that's been historically a thing for the school. So all the exterior building security lights are shielded so that the light only points down. And so what we would do is we would just not use the sign after certain hours. We'd probably make them consistent, you know, like seven to seven, something like that. Um, we can also, it is not one of those signs where it's like, you know, the, that you see in front of big stores, you know, sale, sale, sale. It's literally just, it's letters. Uh, we can choose the colors, we can choose um, how long the message stays on board. We have a lot of control over it. Um, but I've got to get kind of through some hoops. And what, after I talked to the select board, it was suggested that this group would be a place where I could kind of further garner some feedback and maybe a little support and um, that's kind of my pitch. What can I do to get you excited about my electric sign?
So, one thing I'll share, if the other members haven't read it, the select board voted three to nothing to approve the Berlin Memorial School request to replace and relocate the current school sign now located on the left-hand side of the driveway entrance to Thirty-four South Street, and to place the replacement sign on the right-hand driveway entrance, subject to planning and zoning board approvals and in compliance with the Berlin zoning bylaw. Um, I know in the meeting you had with um, the board, I, I guess it was Chris that spoke um, and I think made the motion. Um, but I think what she talked about was the, the need to stay in compliance with the Berlin zoning bylaws uh, to the, to the degree possible. Um, and I think as you've pointed out, I mean, there's a couple instances where um, your request is, is not in compliance, you know, the the, the size of the sign, the interior, I guess you proposed interior lighting and at one point, I don't know if that's still on the table or not. And then um, the message board being electronic and um, so all three of those are eh, yeah, I wondered how you interpreted the select board's vote that night, um, given the, the way. And I know initially they didn't mention the, the in compliance part. And then it was the statement from the select board was reissued um, a couple of hours after that first statement came out.
You know, I think, Tim, that the, to pick up on something you just mentioned, the, the lighting piece, that was something that the members of the board were talking about in terms of uh, utilizing like solar lighting to, to illuminate the board. Um, but that probably gets me into all kinds of different problems. It's not necessary if the sign is, is electrified on the inside.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if we went back to the board, the message board that we currently have, so that's something that we could look at. Um, I was saying at the meeting, you know, I love the idea of the solar. Um, if only because it sends, it's, you know, it's another way for us to send that message that as a community, we value this transition to more renewable resources. Um, but it's separate from my bigger problem. The sign is a little bit bigger than I could have if it was just the old board replaced. But I think the real issue for folks is the electronic part of it, is the LED part of it. Um, and that's where, you know, we can ask and people can make decisions. Um, I'd like the sign itself. I, I don't know if it's just everybody's seen the okay. Um, so I'd like to ignore the, the little creepy alien guy on the side. It's more for scale. Um, I like the way it looks. Um, as I say, that's, you know, that's just me. I'm not across, I don't live across the street.
The other, the other question I think I spoke of the night you met with the selectman was the the, the language in the bylaw says municipal, religious, non, you know, those are other uses that um, to, to some degree have an exemption from the, the, from zoning in essence. And um, when the planning board met and talked about this last time, and the letter that we sent to the select board talked about the, the precedent that we begin to set when um, those uses that are, might be religious or municipal, don't adhere to the zoning that everybody else in town has to adhere to. the zoning that everybody else in town has to adhere to. And we've always felt a little reluctant to, to go down that road just because of where it might lead. I mean, there are other potential sites in town that could argue that they ought to be allowed the same leeway at their sites as well. So that, I guess that's an issue that concerns me anyway.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with Tim. I, I understand your excitement about what potentially you could do with this sign. But I think the drawing that you sent of the mock-up would look beautiful carved in wood with an exterior light shining on it. You know, I, and again, I agree with Tim's statement of allowing, you know, when, when you say municipal, people think of the town. You know, the town can do what it wants, but as a resident, you have to adhere to the bylaws. And I feel like that is something that if, if it was for emergency purposes or, you know, for something that was a little bit more imperative that it be a specific way. I, but I think that a sign for the school, because it's cooler, might not really.
That's good justification. Come on. Let me ask you guys a different question then. So let's talk about, even though it's paining me to move this discussion into a different area, exterior lighting I won't be able to control. So that light would be on at night. Is that going to be a problem too?
Well, there is technology. There is. No, I mean, you could even put it on a timer, you know. Like that's old school technology. I know. But there are wireless lights. There are, there are apps that can control lighting from a distance.
Okay. I, I could research that. So let me, because it's really, you guys have been great.
Can I present a, can I present a third opinion from the planning board?
Yes.
So I have a different opinion. I, I believe that it's our job to, in a case like this, to represent the opinions, the goals for the, of the residents in town. So I took the picture that John sent us and talked to quite a few different people in town, at least a dozen people. In a real mix of young and old, with the kids and without, people who've lived here for their centuries and people who had only moved to town recently. And interestingly, I got a very strong positive count out of them. I had one person who initially objected and then kind of changed his mind. Everybody else had favorable comments. And the reason is, the purpose that you present for it is, is valid. There, it really is, there is a need to communicate with, with both parents and kids going to school. And that's a, that's a commuting route. So it's a way to get, communicate with other people in town also as they drive by. And nearly every school's got a sign out front. A lot of them still are in the dark ages of little letters that you have to go out and stick on the sign. But fortunately, modern technology has moved us ahead and you can have that same look and feel, but it can be electronic and you can program it from your office, which makes a lot of sense. I think it's easy to conclude that this is going to be a multi-color flashy motion, you know, because it's LEDs. You can put whatever you want on it and it could be offensive and ugly. But it doesn't need to be, right? It can be, it can be designed so it's very attractive. And it can be programmed in a way that it's, you know, doesn't offend anybody in town. In fact, it's a very positive thing. And the other thing is, you know, we've got one of these in town already, right? Somehow this trailer, this construction, you know, hazard sign appeared in the center of town. And whether you like that or not, most people are waiting for it to leave because it's ugly and be replaced by something that does the same job and is attractive. Because everyone I talked to said, yeah, I learned, you know, whoa, the fishing derby and things going on over the holidays. I learned all sorts of things because there's no newspaper anymore, right? We used to get a newspaper and find out what was going on in town. Now, as we found out with the housing survey, it's almost impossible to communicate with people in this town. Right? And so that's got a very positive, had, had a very positive impact on the town, which people appreciate. And I think we should be considering making it possible not only to do this at BMS, but to do something like it in the center of town. Something that's attractive and gives us a way to communicate with people. And I, and I don't understand the municipal versus private thing either. I, the town absolutely should have the ability to, to do things differently if, if there's a need. I mean, just because we put a sign at the school doesn't mean that everyone can have one in front of their house or their, or their own business. So that's a different opinion. And I, you know, somehow I'd like to get, I think we really should try to get more input from town residents. I'm not sure that we're currently representing what the people in town want.
Well, it, it, we, we obviously travel in different circles. So, so I, I, when I started asking people back when the ZBA was first entertaining this and, and mine, who did I, I mean, I probably talked to you know, close to 20 people now, 20 to 25. And it may be my bias that, you know, in terms of the way I present. But I ended up with a crowd of folks that all said they would rather not see us move forward with a sign like what John is proposing.
Did you show them the drawings?
No, because I didn't have them back then.
Well, if you came up to me and said, hey, we want to put an LED sign in this school, I'd be thinking, I think like Carolyn said last meeting, some horrible colored flashing obnoxious thing. And I, I want that in town.
Well, I, I wonder if we've experimented with one internally lit sign, which I think proved not to, I mean, and that's not a sign that has any movable parts. I mean, is that
The one on the?
At the cafe.
Well, that was just ugly. I mean, I would.
Right. I mean, so you know, maybe what we're talking about here is an approach that uses an externally lit sign for the, for the, the name of the school perhaps. And then try to figure out some way to utilize the, the new technology in some, what you're suggesting, rather tasteful, low-key approach that, and, and as John has talked about, you know, the, the message stays for minutes and minutes and minutes before changes or it doesn't change at all that day or whatever. So.
Yeah, I mean, it could be an LCD or some type of sign that you couldn't, maybe can't even tell the difference between a fixed one and a changeable one.
I know. I did hear some people say to me, why is it that, that we ended up having to cut the budget for the, for educational parts of the program for the school? And now we're talking about a sign that, I mean, they were using a $17,000 figure. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but.
The number I heard as well.
I mean, yeah, so, I mean, they were just saying, how do we end up with money to put up a $17,000 sign when we're not able to fulfill all the other objectives we had in the budget? We had to cut some other things that are.
That's a, a very, a whole different issue, you know.
But I mean, that's what some people were saying to me anyway.
Remember the capital thing.
Yeah. How, how do, how do you feel or how do people feel about the fact that the sign blew down two years ago and we haven't replaced it? I mean, that's embarrassed. Does that mean we don't care about the school? That's what everybody concludes, you know?
I think the benefits outweigh the concerns. Because there are, you know, I, I've seen the signs too, you know, that are just constantly in motion and just obnoxious.
Hudson has one in, along the rail trail. It is garish.
That's not who we are.
Sure. But that, you know, so I, I definitely think, so it, I think it was the last, our last meeting. Somebody said that it was, is going to look like the one that's at Tohoto.
Similar.
I think if we had some photographs of that sign, I almost live in Hudson and my daughter's 24, so I never get over there ever. And at $5 a gallon, I'm not making the trip. So it would, I think it would be helpful to have some actual photographs of what we're actually, you know, it's something more of what you guys are thinking about. Because again, I see the one in Hudson and that's what, when I think LED sign, that is a thing that I think of.
We know, it might, might be helpful though is we, I, I believe the, the sign portion of the bylaw, maybe not in the overlay, but the main part is, is out of date, right? Because it's, didn't we, were we going to upgrade it because it was 50 years old or something? I mean, maybe what we should be doing is trying to get a feeling for an agreement on what is it that we would like and what we would not like and provide some guidelines that John and crew can, or maybe we can even help them try to find some suppliers that can meet our expectations, right? Like if we, if we wanted to look more like a fixed sign, for example, and the externally lit, maybe, maybe someone can offer that with an LCD type of thing that doesn't even look like it's electronic.
Yeah, I think that'd be worthwhile.
But put some, you know, put some boundaries on it, like make it clear what, what features of the signs we don't want and what features we would allow. Just making it more modern and taking advantage of remote programmability. And I'm totally on board with that. I understand what you're saying about that, John. It's, it's a big workload for you and it doesn't make sense. And the signs look terrible when the, when the wind blows and the letters fall off and.
Yeah, you know, I think it's really cold in the winter. Right? So if I hear the wishes of this group correctly, you'd like a picture of the Tohoto sign. And you'd like me to reach out to the folks who proposed this sign for some additional information. Ted?
And possibly some modifications that kind of meet your needs without it looking like an LED sign.
Yeah, yeah. Again, one, the other thing I've said, and I said this to ZBI, I said to the select board, you know, we're not in a hurry with this. You're right, Jay. People have commented, parents have commented to me about, you know, what's the deal with the sign. But I'd rather do the best job we can. Even if it takes a little longer, rather than just throw something up because it's fast and easy. So if I can indulge you, if you can indulge me, we can continue to pursue this.
We actually have an audience member who's still awake.
Hi, Jim. Good evening.
How are you doing?
Sitting here, I've been waiting all night just for this discussion.
Was it worth it?
Well, it's enlightening. I guess John had brought this to us at the ZBA. And I, I was the one that questioned at the ZBA hearing whether or not this is all required to begin with. Because the way the zoning ordinance is written, signs directed or posted and maintained for public safety and welfare or pursuant to any governmental function, law, bylaw, or other regulations are exempt. So at first I figured, well, the school's a governmental function. So why isn't it exempt? I got a lot of pushback from my peers on the ZBA that the school isn't really a governmental function, which seems to be to me, but but then the other question that I had was there's an issue here of the school doesn't actually own the land that the, where the sign will be located. And there was a recommendation for John to take this back to the select board, which apparently he did. And I was, I suppose secretly hoping that somebody would raise the question of why couldn't the select board install this sign and allow the school to use it? And then the sign would be the property of the town as opposed to the property of the school. Since it's already on, it would be installed on town property. And then the school, the school doesn't necessarily have to have an agreement with the town for use of that land with the sign on. They would just have an agreement with the town to use the sign for posting school notices. So I don't know how that would all work or whether it's worth pursuing or not, but I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Interesting idea.
Yeah. I mean, the good news is the, the ZBA is the ultimate decider on, on this question. And I think what the, the planning board will hope to do is to, you know, throw some ideas around and like Jay and John have suggested, come up with some sort of appropriate series of compromises that maybe moves away from John's initial proposal, but tries to capture some of the benefits and at the same time tries to incorporate some of the goals and objectives that the planning board has that we might put together for signage in general, as we make some improvements to the language that, you know, we've got Jay's right. I mean, we, that's a section that got put together probably 40 years ago. And it's time for it to be updated. And we can look for some good examples in some of the surrounding towns. And Carolyn's right. I mean, you, you can find plenty of examples of signs such as this that have used technology and it's run amok. And that doesn't necessarily mean that we can't find a, a good solution and that there aren't appropriate signs out there that would be ideal for this situation and still accomplish a lot of John's objectives. So.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
John's in no hurry. So, you know.
I, I haven't pulled them, but the, the general feeling that I got from the other members of the board, the ZBA was that there was a lot of concern about the LED lights ending up being a very garish looking sign. And that was, you know, it's definitely a concern. There's, some of those are extremely bright. I mean, you can see those things from miles away. So I think there's, you know, there's a lot of concern for that sort of thing. Like I said, I have no idea how the other members of the board feel about the whole thing or whatever. But I know, you know, I personally don't oppose LED signs, but at the same time, the, you know, the ordinance does say we'll have an external light, externally lighted signs for that. So.
So your, your idea about this town owning and developing this is kind of interesting because there's a, there's another problem, which is maybe even more pressing, and that is that we've got a construction hazard sign in the center of town, which doesn't mean any of our, of our zoning bylaws. And it's not very attractive, but is serving a good purpose, right? So someone, and perhaps it's the select board, should be trying to figure out. Someone, and perhaps it's the select board, should be trying to figure out, what do we do about that? Is there a way to replace that with something that does the same job, but everyone finds attractive? And if we did that, maybe they could be installed in two places, both at the schools and the town.
Well, there's actually a third one, um, much smaller. Um, but as you're driving into town there from, uh, from Hudson, as you come into town. There's that little speed limit sign there that tells you what speed you're going. Uh, that apparently I assume the police department put that up, but that's a little flashing LED sign. That's, uh, hung on a utility pole there that gives you your speed.
That is true. And it's ugly, and it tells me I'm going too fast, so it eyes.
Right, one, one each direction.
Um, have we accomplished what we needed to, John?
Right, I, I, right, I, I just wanna say, I think. The, the, the real concern and probably the impetus behind the way the bylaw is written to begin with is that. We are a rural, rural community, dare I say quaint. And we don't want, in, in, it, it, it's, it's. In my mind, it should keep with the feel of the community. And so there are ways to do that with a sign and ways to not do that with a sign.
And I think it'd be helpful if we could, if we could quantify that a little better and give people guidance.
Yeah.
Come up with.
You mean quaint isn't a good definition?
Great word, though.
Especially for so late.
Exactly, exactly.
Eloise.
I, I am on the, uh, energy committee. So if you find something that, about energy efficiency and you find a sign that everybody finds agreeable. Maybe you could talk to the energy committee and we can help you out too.
Sure, thanks, Eloise.
Yeah, I heard some discussion about that the other day, and my guess is this thing's gonna be like a hundred watts, it's gonna be. Dollars per year or something to run it.
Well, that is one of the benefits of LED, for sure.
Your, your streetlights are LED.
I know.
Right, and there is power, there is power, I think, someone said there's a, there's a pole near where the. Sign would go, so it'd be very easy to get power to it, I mean, uh, having solar is great, but then, I mean, that's gonna be another whole maintenance. Issue and.
I don't know, there are many things, I, uh, while you were talking, I was looking up, uh, solar for billboards. And they run the gamut of, you know, eighty dollars to six hundred.
Well, in New England, when the sun doesn't shine very much, you need a lot of batteries and the batteries don't last forever, so you have to keep replacing them and.
Well, we'll put them under the LEDs. Good night.
Ten thirty.
Alright, thanks, everybody.
We'll continue to work on this, John.
That sounds good, we will get that sign up somehow.
Wait, wait, one more, wait, wait, one more, Susanna, I missed her.
Oh.
Susanna.
I was, I jumped the gun, I have something else entirely, I was waiting for the next one.
Oh, okay, well, I'm just gonna leave everybody available to talk now that it's down to three.
John, you can go to bed if you want.
Thanks, you guys, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Susanna, what have we got?
I have a request for a clarification from the zoning board, and I will make this as quick as possible. And, um, the question is in regards to the in-law apartment. And the square footage where it says that, um, the in-law apartment shall comprise no more than thirty-five percent. Of the dwelling's total floor area. Well, we have a problem because is dwelling the. House with the main family, or is dwelling considered the entire structure? Meaning the, the main family and in-law. So for example, if you have a thousand square foot home. And you wanna put a four hundred square foot in-law apartment attached to it. It is under thirty-five percent if you're using the total square footage of fourteen hundred. But it's over if you have to use the square footage of just the main house, which is a thousand. So we would like clarification on that, it could be something you discuss and get back to us. And, um. There was another clarification on whether the, I'm just gonna read what Lynn wrote. Is there any conflict in the new and former way in which the in-law floor area was computed? Anticipated as existing in-law apartments come up for renewal. She doesn't think so, but we should ask for guidance before we run into an instance where the in-law apartment was under thirty-five percent. But is now over thirty-five percent with the new, uh, bylaw calculations. My personal opinion is that we're gonna find the percentages went down. From the old calculations to the new calculations.
Right, that the main dwelling will be more square feet with the new calculations.
Correct.
Right, cause you're not excluding all of the stuff.
I'm not sure if I'm still tuned in that or not.
You are.
Okay, the possibility there is that, um, some of these in-law apartments. When they were doing the previous measurements, they didn't include things like hallways or closets or bathrooms, it was just the main square footage of the floors. In the main rooms, so you could have the same thing where. You had an in-law apartment that was added on that had a lot of wasted or space that wasn't previously counted that now is. So it could go either way, and the concern was. We've been approving apartments, in-law apartments for the last five years under the thirty-five percent standard that we had. We've changed the thirty-five percent, how, how we calculate the square footage, so. The ZBA doesn't, if somebody comes in and wants to renew an existing. Apartment that they have, that they previously had an approval for. We don't have the authority to bypass that thirty-five percent if they're over, even if, even though they had a previous approval.
I can put these issues in the minutes for the next meeting, discussion at the next meeting.
Yep, Tom would appreciate that.
Okay.
Good. Homework.
Yay.
Alright, that was it.
Yep.
Great, thank you both, thank you, Eloise.
Night.
Thank you, team.
Good night.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, we have a second?
Second.
It's non-debatable, all, um, we'll do a roll call, Carolyn.
I.
Jay?
I.
Tim?
I.
Look at that.
Look at that.
We, there's, we can't debate it?
No, the motion to adjourn is non-debatable.
I didn't know that.
I like that.